Of the United States of America. And to the Republic. For which stands. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. Liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. School Committee Chair Report, I have nothing to report at this time. Resource Committee?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, any questions? Seeing none, school building needs, Mr. Stevens?
The only thing on school building needs, I would just like to comment about Crocker Elementary School that is on its way and thank you to everyone who has been participating.
Yes. We're, yeah, we're moving into the design phase, which is, we were excited about that and we got, you got a message, an email today, Bob, regarding the numbers of students, eight?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's, I mean, just making sure that we, that that's a solid number, as solid as. Okay, Policy Committee?
I'm going to update it this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Horgan. Student Support Committee, Ms. LaBelle Pierce?
Thanks, we have nothing new, I will communicate with the members of the committee to schedule our next meeting later tonight, I'll send it on email.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none. Personnel Committee Subcommittee, that would be me, and I have nothing to report at this time. I don't believe there's anything on the Executive Committee. And Student Reports, Mr. Superintendent?
We have no student reports tonight.
Okay, thank you. I don't believe there's a need for executive session at this time. So moving on, and Communications. Ms. Cragan?
Thank you, Mayor, two communications, the first is that the Second Chance Animal Services Program came to Fitchburg at Sima Park and we vaccinated and microchipped more than eighty-one cats and dogs, and this is great news because we had to postpone all of the previous vet clinics because of the COVID situation, so thank you Sima Park for hosting, thank you Second Chance, Friends of Fitchburg Dogs, and Be Positive for making this happen. My second communication is this, behind me is the flag of Artsak, this is the Armenian flag with an addition of the Chevron, the white Chevron, symbolizing the mountains of the area. I want to do a brief thanks to Mayor Steve DiNatali for doing such a beautiful tribute and proclamation for Grigor Taborian, who is connected to my godson's family here in the region. That front page made such a difference for Grigor's family in Armenia. I was told that his family were amazed that this kind of attention was happening across the world. They are in deep mourning for a twenty-one-year-old soldier who died on the front lines, who was ambushed with all of his companions, and everyone in the country again is in deep mourning because at this point, and I want to thank my son Christopher for looking up these statistics, it is hard to get accurate statistics because this war is not being covered in the mainstream press or any European peacekeeping missions going over there. At this point, more than one thousand soldiers, Armenian fighters have perished in the last two weeks, and that number's a lot higher now. More disturbing is that ninety thousand refugees are estimated to have entered Armenia from Nagorno-Karabakh, which we call Artsak, that is the traditional name. More than the population of Fitchburg and Leominster has crossed the border under huge danger and active shelling to find refuge in Armenia. So if people want to help, they should reach out to the armeniafund.org or locally reach out to me, I'm happy to direct. We're doing a mail campaign and a call campaign to make our state and federal legislators aware and for them to speak up because this cannot continue. This is, Armenia is vastly outnumbered, outarmored, and these numbers are only going to go up. So I want to thank the mayor for giving me this, giving the wonderful proclamation two weeks ago and making Grigor's family so proud. And that, that front page has gone all over, all over the country, so thank you. And thank you for letting me speak because as long as the situation goes on, I have my flag and I have the report, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to comment? Hearing none. Mr. Superintendent, we move into your area, Superintendent's report.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we'll start the, my portion of the presentation or the meeting with a summary of COVID activity in the city. As I've had for the last few school committee meetings, Board of Health Director Steve Curry is with us tonight to talk about what's going on at the city level, and also Pam Rivers with some school-specific data. So what I'd like to do is share my screen here, so if you can bear with me. There we go. For some reason, it's not scrolling down here. There we go. So over the last several weeks, I've been sharing out the map of Massachusetts, the red, yellow, green, and like the fall season, the colors on the map have changed from green to yellow and red. And over the last few weeks, Fitchburg has moved from green to red, actually over the last two weeks. We went to yellow at a rate of four point eight cases per hundred thousand. And most recently, our average daily incident rate increased to twenty-one point four percent with a percent positivity in the last fourteen days of just over four and a half percent. As I've been sharing the trend over the last couple of months now, the line I'd ask you to pay attention to is the line that is multicolored, that goes from green to yellow to green. From middle of August through the middle of October, we increased to yellow as it went over four, four point eight, and you can see last week's data from DPH, the incident rate increased to twenty-one. Again, this is just shown here in the average daily incidence rate here, a little bit clearer. And each line signifies the state color code in terms of rates per hundred thousand. And as we are now over eight, we are considered in the red category as are many other communities in Massachusetts. At the last school committee meeting, Board of Health Director Curry informed committee members in the community that we had sixteen cases in the city at the time. Since then, periodically, Mr. Curry's office has provided either to me or on social media, the number of active cases in the city of Fitchburg. And actually, as of noon today, we're at two hundred twenty-two confirmed or positive cases in the city. At this point, I'd just like to turn it over to Pam Rivers, Pam put together a dashboard describing the activity at our schools and, you know, the various cohorts of our students, so Pam, can you chime in here?
Sure, good evening. So we wanted to share another view of things and what it looked like. As you know, Cohort C has been in our buildings and doing very well, as I reported previously. There was a single incidence of one occurrence that affected the cohort to have an incidence of a confirmed, and then contacts in Cohort C, beyond that, through the entire weeks, there was no occurrences whatsoever. And you'll see in this, as we go along throughout the schools, that yes, there has been an increase in our city, and it is reflective in the various cohorts, primarily Cohort A and B and the remote Cohort D.
And up until this time, the only cohort that has been in the schools is Cohort C. Just to remind everybody. So again, as a reminder of the various codes, again, the average daily incident rate for red, yellow, and green, we have moved into the red zone. You know, I should just add here that this is what's from the initial guidance upon selection of learning model. We have deferred our return to hybrid from November second to November nine. And we continue to encourage all members in our community to wash their hands, wear masks, and socially distance. And what I'd like to do is have Mr. Curry talk about, I guess, what's happening, what he sees in the city, and also what's happening tomorrow for testing over at Cogswell Park.
Thank you Superintendent Jokla, and good evening, everybody. Folks, tomorrow at Cogswell Park from ten to three, we will be conducting a free drive-through test site. It will be, the entrance will be next to the Knights of Columbus on Electric Ave, and we hope to drive folks through and exit out onto Mount Liam Road. The target on this, this test site is actually the Crossroads Church parishioners, as well as our, several of our hockey leagues. As you know, we've had outbreaks in both of those areas, so we are targeting those crews, but these, this, this test site is open to any, anyone, it's free to the public, and we strongly encourage community members to utilize it, especially our students. Our students are, have been the, historically in this COVID pandemic, been the asymptomatic group, which brings up very concerns, very big concerns for me personally, health-wise, because they are potential for spread and we were not able to track it well. So hopefully, we can weed out any asymptomatic people in this test site and take care of people's needs. Any questions?
This is Jim Walsh, Steve, first of all, thank you and Pam for all the updates that you've been providing to us, I really do appreciate it. Do you know tomorrow with the test, how soon individuals be notified if they're positive or negative?
Last I checked it, it was gonna be, it was looking like twenty-four to forty-eight hours. That, I think that might be really aggressive, seeing as though we're, I drove by several of the test sites today and saw one line almost three hours long, so I really think this, this is gonna have an overall effect on it. So it may slow things down, but for now, they're saying twenty-four to forty-eight hours.
Thank you.
This is Jean, Steve, hi, thanks for coming and presenting. So it can take up to like five days though, right, for those results?
Back when we had a large spike in April and May, we were even seeing up to seven days. Yeah, hopefully, we won't see that again because this, this has been more lab made available. But, you know, again, there are, there is a lot of testing going on, so I'm sure there's gonna be some effects of it, but.
So I have a, I have a few questions, I don't know if I should just try to put them all out there, you guys, I don't want to jump on anybody else if they were gonna ask something, but. So I'll just put them out there and you guys can tell me to stop talking, but who, I would like to know, like, who reviews the tests? So I'm just gonna, I'm gonna be right out front and say, I don't think we're in a position to bring people back to school on Monday because the numbers continue to increase at really an alarming rate. I, I mean, I've just been, I am alarmed by the numbers that I see. And given that it could be a bit of a delay to find out the results of some of these tests, and that puts us up against really the weekend of before we would know a lot of that number. And I feel like, just to be proactive, the idea that we would be bringing people back in on Monday just really worries me. And then I guess I'm wondering who actually, so my question is, who's actually reviewing those test results? Because when you get, when you get the results, right, or the Department of Health gets the results, and then you have a contact tracing system go into effect. Who at the school level is, is somebody at the school level saying, okay, yeah, this person's cleared and good to go, right? Like, because if we have the numbers that I suspect you're probably gonna see when you do these tests on tomorrow, that's gonna be a lot. So I'm very, I'm very concerned.
Yeah, I'll step in before Steve, if that's okay. So it is alarming when you see the charts and things rising. I can share with you that Steve has shared with us the number of the two twenty-two. Out of that, the chart that you saw went from October twenty-first until the present day today, and that included thirty-six total. So when you think of the comparison between the thirty-six and the two twenty-two over that period of time, and that is, you know, primarily our student population, it's, it's a much smaller number. With respect to that, we're watching, we're monitoring, we know that yes, that, you know, there is, like Steve said, a student population that we need to watch. With anything that comes through the testing, I'm also on the Maven site that the Board of Health is on, so I will get certain results, or if I'll hear of something, I'll consult with Steve and the nurse Dottie to see if they're finding the same things. And we get in real time who's positive, who's confirmed, who's a contact that needs, you know, further watching. And then from that, they also further supply us with isolation times for those that do, you know, test out positive, and then quarantine times for those that are a contact that require watching. But again, the number is thirty-six from the twenty-first on out of the two twenty-two. So Steve, other information?
It's accurate. That's accurate, but we, we work almost daily with the school nurse to update any potential contacts and confirmed cases.
I guess I just don't, I don't know, I feel like we're in the middle, the throes of a phenomena that it's bad and regretful. But I don't, I'm not sure the timing is wise to go back in. I think, you know, if we, that's, that's my position, I don't know how other people on the community.
So if I, if I, if I can jump in here. Steve and I spoke earlier today regarding our, you know, planned next phase and you know, about having students in Cohorts A and B return on Monday, the ninth. And given, you know, his concern about potentially the asymptomatic on the heels of crossroads and, you know, the street hockey that we were proposing tonight, I guess, for, to extend that date from the ninth to the sixteenth, and also with Cohort C, who is coming in to our schools, that after tomorrow, they would be remote through Friday, November twelfth. Would be our goal to, again, you know, we're still trying to finalize an MOU as well, but it would be our goal to return the students to school on Monday, the sixteenth. You know, I should just point out too that this, today I have spoken to a few other school districts whose average, average daily incident rate and percent positive are in line with ours from the last DPH report. And two of them have already have started, started hybrid and are continuing in hybrid. Today was a busy day, you know, from the state level, the governor spoke about some new steps he was taking statewide. And coincidentally, there was a conference call with superintendents with Commissioner Riley today. You know, there, there may be a new, I'm gonna say grading scale or metric that the state looks at. But one thing from the evidence that they've seen here in this country and in Europe is that spreads in school, schools are not spreader locations. That's been demonstrated in the, in the research so far, but I think just with what's happened in Fitchburg where we've seen such a dramatic increase over the last two weeks since Steve Curry was last with us and us with you, we're looking to just kind of pause before we bring additional students back in.
This is Jim again, I guess this is a question for Pam and or Steve or both of you. So tomorrow, when the, the drive-through testing takes place and you start to get results, if somebody tests positive, is it just based on their age that you would assume that they're a student in our district? It doesn't say that they're a Fitchburg student, or how do you determine, you know, somebody who's ten years old, that they're a student here or some other school, if they go to the charter school or the school choice, they go someplace else?
So every confirmed case, I'm sorry, did I interrupt?
No, go right ahead, Steve.
Every confirmed case is put into the virtual network and reported to us. With that information, we actually reach out to the confirmed case and conduct, conduct contact tracing. So one of the first things in the, in those interviews, especially school-aged kids, is what, where do you go to school? So we identify that right away, and we have made contact with all the schools in Fitchburg. And so we notify them, the, like Nurse Rivers, we notify the head nurse that there is either a potential contact in their school or a confirmed case. And we let, we let the school nurses take charge from that point.
Steve, can I ask a clarifying question for the testing tomorrow? Is that testing only for Fitchburg residents?
That testing is open to the general public. I think it will be a busy site, so I have reached out to my colleagues in Leominster and Gardner. I do know that there is a Leominster site on Wednesday, and I believe they're working on Thursday. And judging by our outcomes tomorrow, I would be looking at hosting another site if that's a possibility. And I know the Gardner Health Director is, is working on that as well, so long, long and short answer is, this is open to the general public. Anybody can come, anybody's encouraged to, and they're also encouraged to, to utilize the Leominster site on Wednesday, and I believe that's at Doyle Field.
Any further questions? Continuing, Mr. Jokla.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Steve, thank you, Pam. So moving on, tonight with, with us, we have Dr. Kumanyadiki of Inclusivity Education, who completed the inclusivity appraisal and has shared the results with the district's central office and principals. I've asked her to come before the school committee tonight and have her provide a summary of how she did the, her appraisal, the audit, if you will, her findings, her assessment of where we're at, and what's next. And this is all a part of us, you know, really taking a look at who we are and what we can do better as a school community to make sure our staff, students, and families feel welcome and belonging, and that everyone feels that they have access to opportunity. So with that as an intro, I'm going to stop sharing my screen, and welcome Akuma.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for having me. I am gonna probably take forty-ish minutes, it's a truncated version of the report, but I want it to be as thorough as possible with it, just so that we can really understand where the district stands and where the district wants to be able to go. So I will share. Okay, so as was explained, I did an inclusivity appraisal of the school district. This is commonly referred to as an equity audit. The reason I say appraisal is it just has a positive connotation to it because it's really about growth and development and where we want to go, as opposed to me looking for all the bad things. The process for it will be explained as I go through, I will give you a summary of the things, and then really highlight the seven biggest findings that I discovered while going through this appraisal process and give you some of the details about it. Then at the end, maybe take some of the questions or comments you may have, but being very clear that this is sort of like my block of work. There is another consultant who's doing a lot more of the work on the, helping you get through all of these things, but want to see if they present this. So it's gonna go similar to the order that you see presented here, I'm gonna show staff data, and then very truncated of the student survey data because the students actually pretty much are cool to district. And then our staff data, which is looking at a lot of the accountability and publicly available data that's posted on the district's website. So starting with how I overall rate things is on a rubric of one to five. For context, I used to be a high school English teacher, so I didn't just make up rubrics, I have lots of background in doing this myself, I was an English teacher. But it goes on a scale of low to exceptional, so one to five. And the idea being that we know we want to get to five, but five is always aspirational, I really use the four as the area you're trying to get to, which is proficiency. And another big thing to understand here, which I have bolded, is that there's no rounding of the number to the nearest whole number. I round to the nearest hundredth, and that is very intentional, in the idea that we really want to track growth and progress incrementally and be very intentional about it, and not try to make things that we can jump up to the biggest number. So if something came out to an average of like a two point five one, that does not now become acceptable, it just says like, you're beyond developing, approaching acceptable, but you have to hit the three to actually be it acceptable. So that's understanding how the numbers are going to go for this part. Inclusivity scale, so understanding that the areas of measurement are really for diversity, when we think of diversity as representation, inclusivity as in levels of contribution moderated by belonging, I'll explain that a little clearer in a second, and then equity, which is more or less synonymous with fairness. And the idea that there are two poles here, if you all were at oppression, I wouldn't have actually worked with you, because I know my limitations. And the idea is wanting somebody who's not trying to recreate oppressive environments, so knowing that you all are, at least were wanting to do this work, meant that you were on the right path. Then liberation is like, we've arrived, we've achieved, I don't really think anybody in the world is there, but if you were there as well, probably wouldn't have worked with you because what am I here to do? So it's that middle part, but oppression is full unjust system, liberation is full critical transformation, everyone had a seat at the table, recreated society, and we're all happy and dandy. Where we're really focusing on is the parts that you see in the middle. So diversity is defined as human differences and uniqueness in characteristics and identities, usually in very socially constructed areas, so race, gender, class. And when we think of equity, which is not the same as equality, and not even the same as like justice or liberation, the idea of equity is fair treatment where we're overcoming systemic barriers. It's important to understand that those barriers have not necessarily been dismantled, but we've put enough in place so that they're not actually predicting outcomes that are coming out inequitably for different historically marginalized groups. And a lot of this is predicated on that center part of. And a lot of this is predicated on that center part of inclusivity. So when people see the words participation and contribution and they think they're synonymous. They're not, here's a quick example for you. So think of basketball, we even, for educators for the most part here, we know about the idea of the participation trophy. The person who's just kind of on the team to be on the team but never comes off the bench, that's the participant, so that's participation. Versus contribution contributors are those who are in the game, scoring, really there to help us advance something. So when we're thinking of your level of inclusivity, it's that level of contribution, am I here just to be here? Or am I really here to help accomplish something? But that's not enough on its own, we moderate that by our level of belonging. So in my most authentic self, do I feel comfortable showing up as I am? So me as a black woman, my code switching, am I okay with having my natural hair out? Do I feel comfortable being me and do I feel embraced in that way? That's really gonna moderate our level of inclusivity. The lower sense of belonging I feel, the less sense of inclusivity I would feel and vice versa for the other way. So that's how these things were measured according to the survey, so if anyone here took the survey, that's the background behind why the questions were written the way that they were. There were seven major findings from this that I really want to highlight as a major DEI needs of the district. This isn't to say this is all of them, this is sort of the prioritized ones. The numbers are arbitrary, this is not the order you have to handle them in, it's just letting you know if there were seven of them. This is the order I'll present them in. So for staff, there were three that were really highlighted, so staff diversity, not just in relation to national numbers and local numbers, but really within student affinity. Staff of color sense of belonging. Then staff of color was pretty much everything that has to do with equity standards, so policies, practices, access and opportunity, commitment to their needs. For students, it was really only a focus on inclusivity, more so the schoolwide level than the classroom level. And then we really looked into the artifacts, there was white flight from the district that we wanted to focus on. Academic outcomes, particularly for the Hispanic students, looking at state test scores in those ninth grade core courses. And then number seven is student discipline differences, particularly for that black and Hispanic population. So looking at the staff analysis, like I said, diversity, inclusivity and equity is what's measured, inclusivity is weighed the heaviest, so it's about a half of the score that you'll see. Equity, the third of the score, diversity is 1.6. Diversity is the lowest measure because it's not that it's not important, but we can have as diverse a group as we want. But if the culture is still the same, if the culture still feels like it's not equitable, it doesn't really matter who's at the table. Measured on that same exact rubric that I showed you. And there are three ways that I looked at it, really statistical, so you don't have to know all the Uber details about it. But knowing that the idea is really looking at percentages here in just representation across the district. Compared to the state, compared nationally, and then very internally, which is gonna be the part that I think is gonna be the most highlighting to a lot of you for this section. So looking at across Fitchburg compared to national numbers compared to Massachusetts. You'll see that you're higher than the state of Massachusetts, which actually has one of the highest white population of teaching staff at about 92%. So if you all having about 10% staff of color, you're doing better than the state. But nationally, you're not as high. So that's that comparison there of whose number are you trying to match, are you trying to get better than the rest of the state? Or are you trying to catch up with national numbers? So putting the comparison for both of them, but knowing that this is really just one piece of the puzzle, though this is typically where people stop and they're like, we're just trying to get above usually both of these numbers. So in theory, you'd all say, hey, we hit 22%, maybe we've arrived. So that's why I really harp on the racial affinity between students and teachers. So this is the demographic data pulled directly from your own information. The most important thing you're seeing here is that 16.4 to one student teacher ratio. Because that's what most districts across the country are really highlighting is. What, how many students can be in the classroom, are we overly populated? But really what's more important here is not just general student teacher ratios, but within racial affinity. So the idea that for me as a black person, how often am I gonna see another black teacher in the building? Not even necessarily them being my actual teacher, but just how often am I going to see one so I could have somebody to go to, to talk to? And this is an important thing, so you don't have to read this whole thing. But the summary of what's here is that there's been a study that followed students in North Carolina. For from third grade through high school, 106,000 students were tracked. And the idea that if a black student has just one black teacher, what you've all probably heard is like, oh, they do better. They found real outcomes here and said that the statistically significant change in dropout rates. And an increase in their likelihood to attend college. So that's great for them. And then the count, well, the connecting part to that is that for the white students, there's no negative effect. So you can increase your staff of color, students of color can see more teachers who look like them. And do progressively better than they would have, meanwhile, there's no effect on the white students that hinders them in any way, shape or form. So this is the importance of really increasing that racial affinity because it only does good, it does no harm to any group. So when we looked at the comparison here, this already anticipates that it's gonna be pretty difficult for Fitchburg to achieve just where it is right now. 70% of your student population identify as students of color, but only 10% of that teaching population does. And we see that when we break down each individual group. So looking across groups, I use the white students as kind of like the baseline. Remember 16.4 was across the board. So when we look at the white students, for every five-ish white students, there's one white teacher for them. So that's that complete affinity, I always feel like I'm going to be included here, I see nothing but staff that looks like me. That's a huge difference in trying to figure out, well, how did we get to 16.4? We look at the rest of our student body. So when we look at the Asian students, 128 Asian students exist for every one Asian teacher. Drastic difference there in how often they're actually gonna feel like they can see themselves represented in any part of that school building, and this is district wide. On the actual dashboards that I have, you can easily break these things down, but this is just summary data for you. Black students, about 70-ish students to every one black teacher that exists in the district. For the Latinx students, this one's uberly important because the school district at this point is over 50% Latinx to Hispanic students. Yet there's still 126 of them to every one Hispanic teacher that's in that district. So how do we close that number, knowing that for the last several years? It continues to trend upward with the number of Latinx students that are gonna be in this school district. So how do we get more teachers to produce more affinity for them, so that it's not just racial affinity for my student body? But I also can see it represented in the staff around me. And finally, for the multiracial students, similarly about 98% of them, or it's 98 to every one teacher who identifies as multiracial. That one gets a little bit more complicated because they may decide to find affinity in another group. But regardless, really focusing more so for your district on, on affinity than just those representative overall numbers. I know that that's what you have to report typically, so I really like to look at the internal data. So this is the difference between us hiring so that the numbers look good externally versus us hiring because it needs to really be for our student body and internal changes. Then we look at inclusivity, we're really just focusing on, this is where I ask a lot of average questions. So what's your level of belonging in the school, what's your level of contribution in the school? And what I was really measuring, the summary of what you see here, is are the averages statistically different? So if the white staff said that they felt something out of 4.3 and the staff of color said they felt that it is 3.2. Are those numbers actually real life difference or was it just sampling error? And then if I captured everybody, it would have been the same number, that's what statistical significance is really trying to tell us. More often than not, we are seeing that the numbers are statistically different, meaning that there is a genuine difference between how your white staff feels compared to your staff of color. And I'm always looking for the numbers in a way where it might show that there's either just cognitive dissonance in how these groups feel. Or we're going through some type of safe potential unintentional favoritism of one group over another. So we saw that in inclusivity levels, which I said again are moderated by that level of belonging. So if you look at that graph on the top, it's already telling us that the staff of color feel a lower sense of belonging than the white staff. Quick point, probably asterisk here, the fact that I even have to bundle it up into staff of color is already a thing to be aware of. The numbers were so small for each individual group, that if I was to separate each, each staff of color group, I wouldn't have been able to do any analysis. So the only way to do it was to bundle them into one group. But that already tells you what types of affinity makes it, that there's so few of us that we've gotta be grouped together. That's already gonna create a sense of difference in senses of belonging. So when you look at the graph on the bottom, the one that's like coral salmon colored, I'm a woman, I know, I don't know what the men are gonna call that color, but it's coral. So the idea of the coral colored graph is their levels of contribution are a bit higher if we just look at them on their own. But that's why I said that doesn't mean anything. I can be the CEO of a company, but if I still feel like I'm wearing a mask and playing a role when I come there, I don't have a true sense of inclusion in that space. And that's what the yellow is showing us, hence why it's highlighted. And there we see that there's a statistically significant difference. It's getting almost to a degree for the staff of color, so it's not like they feel like they have no place in the district. But it is still much lower than how the white staff feels, so there's this difference in when I come to work every day. How comfortable do I actually feel showing up at work versus my white counterparts who are pretty much moving through this district in a way that feels pretty comfortable for them. Now we look at some of the equity centered measurements using the same statistical differences that I was looking for. And here we focus on equity principles, first really on the difference between practice and policy. Because we do see that if inclusivity goes up, equity will go up. So already assuming that trend, we can already know that there's gonna be a statistical difference for the most part between how the staff of color are gonna feel compared to the white staff because the inclusivity levels were different. We see that in practices. So when we think of equitable practices, this is the day to day, how I function, the, how rules show up in real time. And the difference between design, when we crafted this, how was it supposed to play out, the intent? Versus when it's applied, what actually happened, the impact of it? And for both of these, we always see that for the staff of color, they're thinking that the way equitable practices are designed and applied are statistically different. In enough of a way where the assertion here is there's likely either a misalignment. In how are we defining equity in this school district? Is it actually that you're being inequitable, which I don't believe? Or is it, we don't actually all have the same working definition of what we think things are supposed to show up as? So I, as a person of color, work walking through this district, I'm like, this isn't equity to me. But if I as a white person have a different understanding of this, this seems a bit more equitable. Often because people can do confuse equality with equity. So here I really do recommend some reeducating, some realignment on when we look at how we're functioning day to day, what's in our handbook. What does it mean to be equitable in these ways? Because we see this in the policies, the policies determine how our practices are played out. You see often that policies are rated a little bit higher because often your policies appear on like your website. So those have to look like things that sound like we have values that make sense to everyone. But we still see that same difference, one of them is slightly not statistically significant. Five is the baseline for statistical significance, it's very arbitrary if you're, unless you're a scientist. So in real life here, the idea is that we're still seeing these differences in how one group is understanding. How policies are written and how policies play out versus how the white staff are feeling this. And how do we reeducate to make sure everybody's aligned with what the policies mean, so we know how they're supposed to show up whether in a classroom or in a central. And then opportunity and access and the difference for that. I always pause here, English teacher, words mean things. So quick definition difference for opportunity and access. I always use my own life example, opportunity means everybody could do the same thing. Access is, but would I actually be able to make this happen? So I grew up in Jersey City. And when I was applying for college, the open houses were never in Jersey City. They were in like Milburn, New Jersey, or Tom's River, New Jersey, journeys away from me. Opportunities though, they advertised it, I knew about it. But the access to it, if I had to take a city bus, I wouldn't have been able to get there. My access was the blessing that my dad had a car and could drive me to these things. So the opportunities can be equitable, but if everyone's access to them are not the same, then it doesn't actually matter, you're not gonna get to equity. And that's what we're seeing potentially is the difference here. When we see the staff of color looking at the opportunities and access. You may be advertising the same kind of job positions, promotional opportunities, but do they have access to it? What may be going on in their personal lives, what, what are the requirements, what's the criteria? Do I actually have the access to this even if you said everyone could do the same thing? Because that directly affects the commitment the staff of color needs in initiatives, which is the graph on the right. If I don't believe I have the same access to the same thing as everybody, there's no way I can fully believe you're committed to me. But we do see here that the number does drop a bit for white staff. So this says that there is some type of actual thinking happening here, some hindsight of. We know we want to, but if we're being fully honest with ourselves, we know we're not being as fully committed as we could be, which is always a good sign. I took away all the qualitative data here to truncate the report, but a lot of the qualitative data, which is the interviews that I did with different people. Do actually support this idea of, we see what we could be doing differently, we do recognize that we have work to do. So they've already started this awareness and internalization process of there's work that needs to be done. But that's the difference, if it's just saying internal but not showing up, you do see these numbers for your staff of color who are just like, I don't really know if anything's really happening. And we see that these things are connected to each other, so if we want the equity principles to go up, access and opportunity and commitment to the staff of color have to increase as well. So that affects overall perception of DEI, which is lower for the staff of color than it is for your white staff, which at this point probably was getting to be an expectation. The internal is always a little bit higher than external because you guys are there, you're biased for your system, so you always feel a little bit better than others do. But we do understand that it's lower overall for people of color than it is for white people in, even in the district. So those outside of the school district may see Fitchburg from the lens of however the person who has racial affinity with them sees it. And you do want that to change because the internal perception has to go up in order for the external perception to go up. So this is really highlighting the work that the district has to do inside if you want your neighboring school district to believe in whatever equity initiatives that you're trying to put in place. This was the overall score for the staffing part of this, was just 2.64, not terrible. But just approaching acceptable, and we know we do want to get a bit higher there. Student analysis, we really just focused on one part of student analysis, this is just a reminder of what the numbers look like. And when you see that there are students who are majority Hispanic here, it explains why they were the one group that I could separate out, the rest of the students. Because the whole district, of course, doesn't respond to a survey, I had a sample of the district get bundled into students of color. Same measurement processes, the only difference here is we don't score diversity for students in public schools when I do any of their appraisals. Because you don't really have control over that. So if you're a private school, I would have measured that because you can recruit, but as a public school, it's not really within your abilities. So same things here, but we do see different numbers. So these ones aren't necessarily statistically different, and there's a reason why I show the student survey data before the artifacts data. If we were to look at these numbers, though yes, they're different statistically, we're saying they're basically the same. All of your students mostly feel in the classroom like they're being treated pretty equally. And feel schoolwide like they're being treated pretty equally. It's always to go back a little higher for classrooms than it is for the school, which makes sense. Because I'm in my classroom most of the time, I know how my teachers treat me. But the difference here is, I don't know what I don't know. So for me, going back to my school, until I started visiting those open houses and going to these random towns in New Jersey. Was when I came back to Jersey City and said, maybe we're not getting treated the same. Now I get why they're calling us an inner city, this now feels different. So this idea of, if it's not completely oppressive for the students, then they think things are okay. So yeah, their inclusivity levels are at a five, but they're not at a two, they're like, this is okay, it could be worse. Which is how most students of color are going to think. The white students, it's a bit higher, they're lower in the overall school population now, which is probably why their numbers are lower than like the white staff was. But overall, they're like, well, I still feel like I'm being treated okay. These numbers aren't okay, they're not good, hence why the rating is still not as high as it could be. The things aren't different, but there's still a lot of room for growth. The highlighting of the students feeling differently from what your artifacts are gonna tell you is very important. Because the student data said 3.41, you're like, oh, we're doing, we're doing okay, we're on the right track. So we have a lot of work to do when it comes to a lot of the district artifacts or really measures for when I do the appraisal. The definition of equity, which I showed you at the beginning, is are we overcoming systemic barriers? Are we doing things that are, we're not treating students equally, which is giving everyone the same thing, but equitably, giving everyone what they need so that they have equal outcomes. Holistic review, same process here, but this is using that DEI lens very, very intensely. The data review process here is, we have two buckets, we have the historically disenfranchised groups, tend to be black and Hispanic students. And then we have the historically advantaged or higher performing groups, which tend to be the white and Asian students. And that's really what we're looking for, were there difference in the outcomes for these groupings? If they were, how vast did they look? If they were, how vast did they look? And was there a trend? So I was never looking at just one year's data because you can easily say, well, that's just what happened that year. Often I was looking for at least three years of data to say, is there a pattern in what I'm seeing? So we can't just say it's one off. But if there's a pattern of something happening, then I can say something is actually inequitable here. We saw that one with enrollment demographics. So I told you, one of the takeaways here was white flight. So when I first spoke to Bob the first every time, he's like, you know, we have a huge Hispanic population. And I was like, yeah, they're making up over half of the district. What a trend helps us realize is you're not becoming a more colorful district just because they're moving in, but the white families are moving out. So that yellow line is showing you that it was about 32.7% in 2017 and now we're down at 29.6%. White flight is usually something that we really do have to focus on because it brings about inequity. There's a mindset that usually accompanies, why am I leaving this school district? What is it that I might think about us becoming more majority minority that's making me feel like this isn't where I might want to educate my students? So this is the idea of really seeing that your school district has become progressively more Hispanic, not just because of them coming in, but other people moving out. And it looks clearer when you look at it in the raw numbers. There's about 200 more Hispanic students over the last three years and about 150 less white students in the school district. So the numbers are actively changing. And so make sure that this wasn't just like, oh, well, people are graduating. Got you there. So I looked at intake versus attrition. And when we look at that last graph on the far right, you'll see that for every student, there's actually less students coming in for all the students who are graduating. So that's that attrition rate that we're looking at, that intake ratio to the attrition ratio is saying, no, we're actually gaining white students at a much lower rate than we used to compared to who's leaving. When you look at that for each other group, especially for the Hispanic students, we see in general, many more Hispanic students are coming into the school district than are graduating. So that's that idea of they're seeing some type of affinity or this now looks like it may be a district that seems like it should be serving our students more, we see a lot of us here. So we're moving in. What effects may that be having on this majority group who is now like, I don't feel like I'm the majority anymore? And they're not. The white, the white students now are not the majority of that school district. So what is this potentially doing to the family's mindset? The assumption would be if we have this great of a population of students of color, we should actually be moving the curriculum in a way where they're served the most equitably. But we're not seeing that happening. So for state testing across the major subject areas, the red bar is the Hispanic bar. Let me see that it's lower. All three years, all subject areas, often statistically so. Majority of the population typically means a difference between two tenths and two fifths. Two tenths is 20% of something, two fifths is 40% of something, right? When you look at those raw numbers, percentages jump much more drastically for every individual number. Which means it actually should be easier for the Hispanic percentages to be higher because you have more wiggle room, there are greater senses of population. So this is letting us know that disproportionately they're underperforming because there's so many more of them, yet they're still at a lower percentage than their white counterparts and their Asian counterparts. So actively not being served as equitably, even though there's a majority of the population. And this starts ninth grade. Oh, for context, the state test scores, I looked at all of the state test scoring from about as early as it starts in third grade through like that 10th grade test that they take across each of the subjects in average amount. So this is not just for one grade level, this is a trend from elementary through high school. Ninth grade core courses, we typically say in education, you can find out the likelihood of a kid dropping out and they're going to college based on how they perform in their ninth grade core classes. Numbers were better here. So they're still performing lower, but we don't see these drastic differences. So this is really thinking about, is there a connection? And I wasn't here for curriculum analysis, but it's another thing that I do. But teacher in me was still going to wonder, is there a difference between what the curriculum is teaching versus how rigorous we're getting for testing? And how are we adapting for that part? And/or is there potentially some type of guilt in, maybe we're passing students in a certain way where they're not supposed to be passed? Making sure that we're getting equitable education and not potentially mixing up SEL with saviorism because that occasionally happens as well. And then the last thing to really look at here, as I mentioned, was discipline. So bringing back again that number I said of like two tenths versus two fifths. The idea that there are so many more Hispanic students that in theory you have a lot more wiggle room for a lot more of them to get disciplined and the number should still stay smaller. Yet in each group, we see that whether it's just being disciplined generally in school suspension or out of school suspension, they're always at a higher percentage than every other racial group, followed pretty closely behind by the black students. Whereas for a good chunk of the show, see that Asian students don't even make this. The white students do tend to be there, but they're always lower. So again, that inequitable way of actually disciplining students. And here we think about more cultural things. So if there's the advice in the district, it's about what is being disciplined? How are these policies being written where certain behaviors that may be coming off in a way are reflective of cultural differences? This is us bringing back that student affinity, so that full circleness of, I may not know, I even say this myself, as a black person, I don't necessarily know what every student needs. But affinity, being able to talk to somebody else to say, am I understanding this student correctly? I took it this way, is that how I should have taken it? Or did I instantly just suspend that person? That's a difference that you would only really be able to figure out if we can increase those numbers. Because otherwise, these numbers are probably not going to go down. But wanted to show you the trend data. So that across the last three years, three full academic years, avoided most of the last school year because COVID caused issues. But we see trends in these data. So really understanding that there's something inequitable happening here, which led to the overall score for the artifact data being at about a two. And that dragged down a lot of the overall numbers. But this is where the district is as a whole right now. You're beyond developing, but you're not exactly acceptable yet. And I like giving numbers because it gives a baseline. Here's where we are, we know where we want to try to get to. What incremental changes do we need to do? And I gave you seven areas to pretty much start to try to make those incremental changes from. So big summary is the part that I wrote and blew at the bottom. The district just needs to really center equity improvement at a systemic level. And then really think of inclusivity at that personal and interpersonal level, especially for the staff, because those who don't feel a sense of belonging can't really produce it for other people. But this is my hope, so I ended with a little bit of happy data from some of the interviews about knowing that the staff here really say, hey, we're committed to social justice. We all entered this profession for the right reason, we know our hearts are in the right place. And I'm always here to say that my data is never about blame or shame. I work with well-intentioned, well-meaning people. You don't know what you don't know. So once I show you what you need to know, how do we work to make it better? That's all I got. So I can stop sharing now, I guess.
So Akuma, thank you. And I guess I'll turn it over to the school committee for any questions they may have presentation.
Thank you. Could I ask, this is Jean, thanks so much for that presentation. That was, that was a whirlwind of information. It would be great to be able to have a copy of that report. But I'm curious, so I'm thinking about your conclusions about the staff. And for people of color, the sense of, you, you talked about like policies and how policies are viewed differently or, and I'm just kind of curious if, if in the data, there are examples of things like that. Either like, so how do you, how do you measure somebody's feeling about whether they're, the policies are inclusive or not?
Right. So for the purposes here, all of the interview data was removed because it would have made this a much longer presentation. But in the full one, which I hope you'll be able to get a copy of, I know I gave it to superintendent. There is interspersed between that is the data that basically people saying like things are being felt differently. So it was a combination of here's what the number says, but I don't know the number means by itself. When I look at the interview information, I'm like, okay, everyone's not receiving these practices and policies the same way.
Thank you. Can I ask another thing? I'll just follow up with another thing.
Yep.
So you, I think in one of the slides you said, you know, simply hiring more people of color isn't necessarily going to change everything for students. It's, it's going to have definitely that impact of like, I see somebody who looks like me and that's important. So what do, and, and I don't, I mean, I, I'm in the education field too. And I feel like there's this sense in Massachusetts that it, it feels like it's difficult to diversify a staff and to hire and to really bring the percentages up like we really need to be doing. And I don't know, do you, I, I know we've, in, in our school community means we've talked about sort of like the homegrown kind of idea of fostering of the field of education for students in our own district to come back and teach in our district. But I mean, have you seen, have you seen strategies that really work?
That's the strategy I think that most people are trying to do now with the homegrown. But I think the importance of why I would say it's not just about diversity is when I was a teacher, I was teaching in Atlanta. So mostly black staff, mostly black students, but I was still teaching a white normative curriculum. So that's why it really has to be a systemic change. If I'm still reproducing, if I'm teaching Brit lit and the idea that England is a nationality, not a race, they're Black Brits, but I'm still only teaching Dickens and Shakespeare. It's not really going to help change anything. So it's that cultural mindset change. And often a lot of the tenants that we think are just normative culture are really tenants of whiteness. So the ideas of like perfectionism and writing things down and power hoarding. So really breaking down those cultural elements so that even if we're homegrowing teachers, if they're still going to reproduce the same things that they did, we're not really going to change any of these inequitable structures.
Yeah, and that's a massive job, right? Like to try to read to.
Very, very long term. Often if and when you all meet Dr. Darnisa Amonte Jackson, she'll tell you it's like eight to 10 years. It's like a generation of work to shift. But that's also why I give those numbers of like, here's where we are, we want to feel like we're genuinely changing and it's about the process, which is often another thing. When you think about how are we measuring if we made progress, often it's these tangibles and more and bigger. But I'm like, no, it's really just about process. If processes are changing, progress is being made.
That's positive to think that we can.
If you want to fix it now, I mean, I get it, but my, 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 my very like cynical way of saying this is like racism's not going anywhere for a while. So it's just time, like let's just, let's just work on the progress.
Hello, you may, you may have covered this. This is Sally. In the process of your research, which is really impressive in its breadth and eye-opening in terms of the content, especially with statistics, were you able to speak to students in the course of the research that you, you've done here in Pittsburgh? And that's my first question. My second question is other communities that you've worked with in, I don't know, New England or just, just anywhere around? Because it, it does seem like, I mean, Atlanta is really, really different than, than here for, you know, a lot of reasons. But anyway, those, those are my two questions. So, but I, I really enjoyed this presentation. I, I, I feel like I, I want to like sit and study. So I'm sure the superintendent will send us the PowerPoint because I, I really need to absorb this in a, in a more deep way, especially once we're past this election, because that's where my head is at right now.
Yes. I know, I'm just like, oh, we're really doing this before election day. But so to respond to, I guess, the latter question, the idea that we are, I've done this with other districts. Sitting at it during the cabinet meeting is that none of this is really, all of it's not really unique to Pittsburgh. It's unfortunately just what kind of happens in most public school districts.
Sure.
So that being a very important part of it. I'm sorry, I forgot to throw that after your question.
Did you have the opportunity to speak to or meet any students?
I speak to the students, yeah. Because most of this happened during the summer, unfortunately, I couldn't speak directly to students. COVID was also happening, but what we did get is on the, on the end of each survey, students were asked basically an open-ended question. And it's not just the students I got, which I removed that graph, which you'll see on the full one. If parents were encouraged to take this with their kids, so it's not just a kid taking it. And for throughout, whether it was elementary, middle or high school, about 80% of them had parental assistance. So the data you're seeing isn't just a student opinion, it's like, here's my family's opinion of this.
Great, thank you.
No problem.
I guess maybe this is a point of context to, this inclusivity appraisal was part of the overall investment in diversity, inclusivity, equity training that you, the school committee approved back in the spring. Tonight is really Akuma's second presentation to us. I think we have four that you're willing or available to do. The cabinet and school principals are working with Dr. Darnisa Amonte Jackson. And I don't know, I can't remember the exact number of sessions, coaching sessions we've had already. But we've had several. And you know, they've, they've been fantastic. And she has, I guess, pushed us and asked us to grow as we go through this process. And as Akuma said, the, the journey from diversity to follow the steps of the path that Darnisa shared with us, diversity, belonging, inclusion and equity can be a six to 10 year process. So you know, the fact that we're, we're doing some of the steps already is, is positive. But I think maybe, and I'm not trying to summarize the inclusivity appraisal's findings, but there's still a lot of work to do. And you know, I know from, you mentioned the texts that we use. And I know we've been trying to, or we started to diversify the texts that are being used across the school district. And I see John nodding his head here virtually. And I don't know, John, if you want to take a couple minutes to just talk about where we're at there.
Yeah, so at the beginning of the school year, I'm sorry, at the beginning of last school year, I started meeting about, you know, diversifying some of our, our texts. And the high school, we began that work at the high school level with the new literacy coach, Alma Notaro. So she worked with myself, Becky Mackey, and the team of teachers at the high school to start looking at texts. So that was one area where we began. In addition, we also looked at the texts that students were reading at the elementary and middle school level. And we invested in, to build our classroom libraries to actually have a number of diverse texts. You know, throughout our, our school libraries in addition to our classroom libraries. So right now, we're actually looking, we looked at the results and we are from the equity audit. And now we're looking at, working on making sure there's additional Hispanic authors in our libraries throughout our schools. Because as you all know, that's the majority of our students and we need to make sure they're reflective in our, in our texts. So we're looking at that. In addition to at the middle school level, we looked at some curriculum products and updated some curriculum products to also reflect equity. So we're, we're beginning, we're nowhere where we need to be, but we have started that work here in Pittsburgh.
And if I can just add to, when Akuma gave a summary of the appraisal to the principals and cabinet, there were, there was, I'll say at least one principal who talked about the discipline data and, you know, and where he was and, you know, where that particular school was a few years ago. And you know, how over time, over the last few years, we've adapted our practices. So you know, and I think Akuma, you mentioned our, our trends maybe mirror what's happening nationally too, I think, from a discipline perspective. So, but again, still work to do, right? And I think, you know, the mayor and I were on a panel, oh, maybe a couple of weeks ago. And I think, you know, part of, or one of the comment made by the facilitator there was, you know, we can't change our staffing, you know, I'll say overnight, but that's a longer term goal. But you know, we can be more culturally. But you know, we can be more culturally competent. You know, in our approach. And you know, I, I think we, we were, we're taking this opportunity to again, look at ourselves. As a district, you know, kind of showing what's underneath the kimono, having a conversation about it. Tonight, we, you know, we shared. This school committee presentation with, or the topic with several of the community groups who we've had conversations with. You know, I sent an email to all our staff today, tune in, so everybody could hear the, the debrief. I also emailed the presentation to everybody in the district. So everyone has access to it. I hope people take the time to, to look at it because it, it is an important. You know, it's more than an artifact, I guess. I think that's maybe one of the terms you use. But it, it's really looking at where we're at now and where as we, where we want to go is, you know, as we're working with Darnissa being coached. And, and how we get there. And you know, I would like to think that, you know, Pittsburgh Public Schools gets there in less than 10 years. I hope it's not more than 10 years. But again, a lot, a lot of, a lot of people in the district, you know, are committed to the work. And you know, with everything else going on and, you know, especially right now, the pandemic. But just from an overall equity standpoint. I think, you know, many of the senior team who are present and a lot of people in our district that have been in the district for several years. And recognize how the community has changed and, and we want to help our community and our students be successful in life. So. So thank you.
Wonder, Bob, could I just ask, and this is maybe not so much, well, it is school committee because like I look at our Zoom call here and we're, we're all. We're not a diverse group, right? So I'm just kind of curious, Mayor, do you know, are there groups in the city that are actively trying to promote? People of color running for positions or, I mean, that is something that I think. We haven't seen a, a big change happen.
Always a challenge.
Yeah.
Always a challenge, yeah. I, and, and, and I don't know if we own, own that, that. Probably the, the, the doctor wouldn't, wouldn't approve of this term, but feeling comfortable, I suppose. Are we sending out that message? I don't know. But committees, boards, commissions. And, and then making the, the leap into professional jobs, always a challenge to find qualified people. And I don't know if it's because we're not sending out a welcoming vibe or, I, I'm not sure. Or is it that, is it something more, you know, more deeply rooted? I don't know. But again, we, we. I know as a city, when we, we're looking at employing folks, we, we utilize every means possible to reach. A very broad population, which includes, includes all the people in the, you know, in the, in the city of Pittsburgh. I'm not sure what more we can do beyond that. I'm sure there is something we can do beyond that. But again, very, very, very significant challenge for us.
You know, that we, we have, as a school department, we've been talking to the community stewards. And inform Pittsburgh over the last year, year and a half. And you know, they're a group that's like, I don't know if they're affiliated or with North of Maine, New View. So, yeah. So I think trying to build, trying to build capacity, community capacity and social capital. And really from, from, from a school department perspective, we're trying to, I guess, make us seem less institutional and intimidating. I know I have Eva here, Eva Kelly on the line too. I don't know if she wants to elaborate some more on what we've done with, you know, with, at least with conversations with stewards and inform Pittsburgh.
Well, I think we've had several conversations, you know, Bob, the cabinet at the central office about how to engage our parents more. Francisco Ramos through New View has trained a multitude of people to be community stewards in all different aspects of our community, including the public schools. And special education. And as a result, you know, we have our LPAC now, where we have. Parents coming and attending and letting us know what they need so we can respond to those needs. I think that it's been a, a long time coming and I think it's happened in little ways. But I think this has really given us some traction in the community. And we're collaborating with them again on November 8th to do a program for parents. Fall back into reading, distributing more books and information for them and school supplies as we go forward. So, and then with our collaboration with the art museum also, that's going to be another great opportunity for our parents to see that the community is surrounding them and helping to support them and wants them to be engaged.
Yeah, if I can interject, I think the advice I typically give to people and it's why I normally say how long this work takes is. If you're a person who's been on the oppressed side, you want quick results. So sometimes that engage, that lack of engagement is we've been doing this and nothing's changing and not noticing those incremental changes. So really having to be upfront with the entire community of nothing's changing overnight. It's going to take certain work. Often it's why I can sit here and be like, America's terrible. My dad could be like, I was here in 1960, America's pretty good now compared to where we started. And I'm like, do I have to wait 40 years? And I remember Dr. King saying, he was very clear that the work he was starting was not going to end during his lifetime. So that being very intentional about how much time it takes. But this is why in strategic planning, I often do the impact versus effort chart. And that idea of like, often we want to do the thing with the most massive impact, but it takes the most effort. And you waiting to do that, you're going to lose people by the wayside because you see nothing changing. So what quick wins can you do along that path? So I see something happening en route to that big thing that's going to happen. But if we're just focused on our 10 year plan, a year or two, I'm leaving because I haven't really seen progress towards that 10 year plan. But what was the one year plan? So you think of it like paying off your debt, that snowballing method, it's the same thing for DEI work. How can we snowball into the bigger thing?
This is Jim. Bob, I know you sent us the, the full presentation a week or so ago. As we have time to go through the complete report, if we have questions, is it just best to send those questions to you?
Yeah, you can. Yeah, you can send it to me, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I, I have a quickie, which is Mr. Thompson mentioned adding, you know, poems and literary, literary works. That will have a cultural component for many of our students. Jean, I'd just like to put that up on student support for something. I, I'd love to celebrate that, being a complete poetry fiend. And poetry is one way to reach every child. And I'd love to see what we're doing and just, you know, celebrate that. And student support is the place for it. So thank you.
I'm work, I'm working right now with Dr. Cochran, the high school librarian. She's working with me to help identify authors that are appropriate for each level. So we're, we just started that work last week, so.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll, we'll, we'll put it on our long list, but thank you for doing that. That, that just seems to me like the benefits we will not be able to estimate because that's, that's for every kid. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate the support, Sally. Thank you.
Hey, any other questions for Dr. Nwadiki? Okay, Akuma, thank you. And we still have you for two more, two more sessions. So I'll be taking you up on it. But thanks, thanks again for, you know, sitting through our community update on COVID and going through the presentation. I, I appreciate it a little more each time I hear it, so thank you.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you for having me. Thank you, everybody, for being attentive and leaning into some of the discomfort. Have a good night.
Thank you so much.
Okay. I wanted to mention, I don't know if you, if you folks noticed an unfamiliar face in the crowd tonight?
Yes.
You see that guy?
Yes, we'd like to meet him.
Yeah, I, I, it took me an hour and a half to introduce him, I'm sorry.
He froze.
And just like, just like that with the introduction is, is camera. Looks like I've got more work to do.
You're going to introduce yourself tonight.
Well, thank you everyone for having me. My name is Patrick Hare. I'm the newly announced chief of staff for Mayor Dean Natale. It's been a, it's been a pleasure joining you all tonight and quite the insight into Pittsburgh Public Schools. I won't bore you too long with my history, but I, I just came from Worcester State University. Where I received my, my bachelor's, my master's degree and spent eight years working for the president there. Most recently as a government and community relations folks. And actually, I, I also note, I chaired the city of Worcester's diversity and inclusion board. So that presentation was, was very insightful to see. Happy to be with you all tonight. I'll let you get on with your agenda, but if any of you ever need anything, please do not hesitate to reach out.
Thank you. Welcome to Pittsburgh.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
So going back to the agenda, the mayor's back. You're on mute.
It's good, I was bad mouthing lemons to see, I was getting snarky about lemons to high school. You see what happened? Hey, Patrick, did you do something? Did you sabotage this? Okay, but that's Patrick Hare, my new chief of staff. He's a great guy. And I told him, I warned him about all of you. And I said, you wait until you meet the school committee and the school administration. And. You'll, you'll understand why I love school committee. Okay, anyway. That's, that's Patrick Hare. Am I up, Bob?
Uh, yeah, I think maybe before we get to the action items, we have a few grants. Craig, you want to just whip through those pretty quickly and then we go to the action items?
Mr. Stevens? We skipped over public comment. You might just want to see if there was any.
Oh, that's right, we did, didn't we? Was there anyone signed up for public comment, Bob?
No, nothing I'm aware of.
Okay. Hey, thank you, Peter. Yeah, all right, so. Go ahead, go ahead, Craig.
We have, we have three grants to be accepted tonight. Our turnaround assistance grants with $95,000. That's 25 at Pittsburgh High School, 25,000 at Long Joe and 45,000 at McKay. We have our early college support grant, that's $29,000 for Pittsburgh High School. And that will support the doing enrollment program. And finally, we have a $47,775 grant for the evidence based early literacy grant. That was a competitive grant awarded to Rhine Gold Elementary School. And that is specifically to increase student proficiency in early reading. And those are all up for action items tonight.
Do I hear a motion to accept?
Take a motion to accept the grants.
Second?
It's a motion made in second and all in favor. And Ms. Greenlee, will we call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Dean Natale.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Ms. Cragon.
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds is absent. Mr. Horgan?
Yes.
We are unanimous.
Thank you. Accept the minutes of the school committee meeting held on October 19th, 2020.
Take a motion, we accept the minutes.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Greenlee?
Yes, sir. Mayor Dean Natale?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Cragon?
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Horgan?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Next. 21-17 and 20-21. Appoint Pete Stevens as the principal Pittsburgh delegate for the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. Virtual conference being held November 6th and 7th, 2020.
So here are a motion.
Second.
Motion made in second and Ms. Greenlee, so all in favor?
Mayor Dean Natale?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Cragon?
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Horgan?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent, I don't believe there's a need for executive session, correct? But you're muted.
That's correct.
Okay, good. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Motion made in second to adjourn. And we need that reading again, Ms. Greenlee.
Yes, sir. Mayor Dean Natale?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Cragon?
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Horgan?
Yes.
We are unanimous.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night, dear, be well.
Take care.